All right, welcome everybody to the March 12th, our normal meeting, please join with the place. Thank you. First thing, a public input, I know everybody's here, kind of a, kind of a theme there to come on a meet jump. Any correspondence?
No.
We're all good. All right, first thing, again, consideration for January 9th meeting, I know people were there or not there, so. Does everybody have a chance to review January 9th and someone like to make a motion? Like to make a motion that we approve our minutes for our general January 9th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any other discussion on January 9th? Everybody was there about me, we were there at all, weren't you?
Will was not there.
And Will is not there. All in favor on January 9th? All right, did Dee join us?
And you have one abstention.
And Will has one. So again, January 18th, we have a special meeting, everybody have a chance to look at those. I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve the minutes from our special board of finance meeting of January 18th, 2024.
I'll second your motion.
Second, okay.
We have a second, any discussions, is everybody there? If anybody wasn't, please make a note of that, all in favor on January 18th? Aye, aye. Consideration of February 6th, again, it was a special joint meeting. I can make a motion that we approve the minutes for our board of finance special joint meeting of February 6th, 2024.
Second.
We have a second, any, any other discussion?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay, we have, I'm saying, all in favor, please say, say aye. Are you good?
Yep.
Aye, sir. Yes, okay, February 8th, another joint special meeting. So I'll keep the theme going here, I'd like to prove the minutes from our special, I'm sorry, our board of finance special joint meeting of February 8th, 2024. We have a second.
Okay, second.
Okay.
I think she beat you. Thank you.
It's easy.
Hey, let's just, 38th, so I may say an aye.
Aye.
All right, again, February 20th, we're running out of, so, February 20th. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of our board of finance joint meeting of February 20th, 24, 20.
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion on that? All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Aye.
We have last one, I believe, of February 20th. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of our, of our special meeting of February 27th, 2024. So did you motion? Actually, we have a motion, another 27th, Cynthia, we got one, thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the 27th? All in favor? Aye, aye.
Oh, look at the doggy.
Um, all right, so we're up on the agenda here, okay, consideration for the board of Ed, two fire pumps. Again, John and I, and I know, and Bob, were you there? Did you walk through the schools? You did not. Um, these are two fire pumps, obviously, we have firemen in the room, but these are pumps that are actually, they're aging out in the Berry School and the middle school, I know Jenna's here. Um, it's pretty cut, cut and dry here, Mary, where's cut and dry from? Um, pretty cut and dry here, obviously, we built pressure in the building, the pumps are obviously a need in there, and they're, they're obviously aging out, they're not keeping the pressure and they're leaking, so Jenna, did you want to add anything on that? We got eight bids and this was the lowest bidder, or what?
Uh, no, we requested a bid waiver.
Yep, and the selectman already approved this also, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the local vendor is doing the work, I believe you're working with, is that correct?
Yes.
What's the dog's name?
Manny.
Manny, okay, good.
So cute.
All right, is anybody else have any questions?
I think it's important that, for somebody that wasn't there for the mechanics of the building, is the pump is to keep a head pressure for the sprinkler system in case there's a fire in any part of the building, so it always needs to maintain a certain head pressure.
Exactly, yeah, and again, the old aging pumps, the fins, it's almost like a pool pump, Bob, you know what I'm talking about, but it keeps pressure in lines, and, and, and when a head releases, it's obviously putting water out. And with low pressure, the, the spray pattern is, is affected, and obviously, it's important to keep up and running, so.
Um, yeah. Chairman. Point of information, should we make a motion for discussion and then talk about it?
Presentation is over, yes, would you like to make a motion, Cynthia?
Well, like to make a motion to consider Board of Education request, that was approved by the Board of Selectmen for 147, 700, to come from CNR to replace two fire pumps, one at the Bethel Middle, Middle School and one at Berry School.
Excellent.
A second for discussion?
Absolutely. Excellent.
All right.
All right, so is there any? On the fire pumps, anybody else have any questions? Dee, is that you? I like the new hairdo.
Oh, thank you, just got it done.
For tonight.
Yeah.
I do have a question, I looked through the, the docs and I didn't see who we're buying it from, and I heard the amount, but who are we actually buying it from, John?
It's from Reeve.
From Reeve, who is a local?
Vendor, yes, yep, and there should be some quotes from them, uh, so we submitted quotes from Reeve.
Yeah. Dee, they're here printed out, but it's, 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 it's the one from the Board of Ed here? And the Board of Selectmen, I believe?
And they were sent to.
Oh.
On the calendar invite, they were sent.
Yeah, yeah, Dee, they were in the, in, in the calendar invite as, as an attachment there?
Fine, I'm sure I have it somewhere, I just don't see it in the Google Meet documents, so that's where I was looking, but that's okay, I'll find it, and if, if everybody knows who that is, that's fine with me, better to use local.
Yes.
Any other questions for, for Jen, or any other comments on the two fire pumps? Try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, someone saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Jen, thanks for being on.
Thank you, bye.
Bye Manny.
Okay, uh, I, I was just like that.
All right, so the next thing on our agenda is consideration of, from the Public Works about two trucks, does someone want to make a motion on this before we start? So I'd like to make a motion that we fund in the amount of $31,182 to, for the Department of Public Works to fund the change of, I'm sorry, I'm just winging this, but to, to fund the change in cost to outfit two trucks that are already on the ground here? In the amount of $31,182.
To be taken from CNR.
I'll second that.
And, yeah, and, and to fund it from the CNR, but for discussion now, yeah.
Okay.
We have a second for discussion, so, um, again, I think everybody knows about this, I know I talked to Cynthia a little bit about Bob, and, and Bob Dibble's here to explain, so I think, let's, let's have Bob explain it first and then we can go into it.
Yeah, sure, so, when we, when we priced, when we priced the outfit, those, those low boys, we, we priced it out, inspected the Dewey's pump system. The Dewey's system is, they've been around for a long time, the two trucks were replaced, they have Dewey's pump system and hydraulics on them, you know, it's a very simple system. Um, it's inexpensive also, and it's been pretty reliable for us, so. That being said, we specced it out, priced it out that way, and in November, beginning of December, when we went to order all those components, Dewey's informed us that they were only going to manufacture three hydraulic valves with, with their pump on the truck, and we need to have five on our, on our trucks. Dewey's is, Dewey's is in the hay porching business, that's what they got, that's their main business, and they were kind of gotten to the snowplow sand business years ago, and I think it kind of Harper's Industries owns it now, there's been a lot of changes in maintenance equipment manufacturers and loans is out, investment funding purchasing. So they probably made some decisions along the line that, you know, they didn't want to make this, this, this hydro section that we need, they went on making three sections that we needed five. So each one of those sections provides hydraulic flow and control for the snowplow, up and down, left, right body, up and down, side dump, up and down, left, and then the, the main dump body going up and down, so that's, that's five, and it's Harper's five sections, right? So, at that point, we had abandoned the Dewey's system, and, and the Dewey's pump runs off the engine, there's a fan belt that dispenses pump. And our other option is, was to go to the Force America system, that requires a power takeoff that goes off the transmission, right, and then off that power takeoff that's on, it's a Parker Hail power takeoff, and then a hydraulic pump goes on to that power takeoff, and then that supplies the hydraulic flow to a, it, it, it's a cabinet system, so there's a hydraulic tank, and then the five control valves plus a fluid flow limiter valving for the, for the standard controls. By going to these systems, and Dewey's is the only system that's all manual, so our, our, all our controls in our cab would have been cable controlled, so we won't have to run any other types of, the other choice is electronics. Force America system and all the other systems are out there now, all electronic, so our controls in our cab, all those hydraulic sections all have servo motors, electronic servo motors, so on and so forth on them, so, and that's where, you know, it, that's where a lot of these costs comes from, through, that's where it drives. The Dewey's system in the cab now that we run, we run a fluid flow limiter valve for the sander controls, for the, the auger, chain auger to feed, and the spinner plate, and it's, and it's, and it's just a simple needle valve for both of them, now it's all electronic, so the Force America, and, and that's what you have to purchase nowadays, it's a, it's a component system. The Force America system does, controls the sander speeds, it'll do liquid um, ground speed control, there's a 50-page manual with just the sander controller on the truck now, you know, and that's where a lot of that cost comes from.
Bobby, can I, I, I see Cynthia's eyes just rolled back a little bit, you know what I mean?
No, there's no rolling here, no rolling eyes, but.
The Dewey's system mounted on the engine, and they're no longer making a five-valve Dewey's system, so now you have to go PTO-driven off the transmission, and then there's an external valve body underneath the body, or wherever it is, and that's where the cost is coming in.
Yes.
Okay, is that kind of?
Yeah, the PTO, a different problem.
Does everybody understand kind of what's going on?
I understand it from the standpoint of being driven.
It didn't work.
Being driven off the transmission, but I don't need to, so, I'll have you educate me on that.
Yes.
I understood it to the extent that I could, you know, see the justification in approving this, but.
You're, we're about the sander turning, right, basically.
I won't be installing it.
We're not fans of electronic control, trust me.
So, um, again, I, I, I saw an email when this first came out, and I understand it needs to be done, okay? But there is a process in this town, all right, that literally, when we give you a budget, I don't care if it's a capital budget, or it's a working budget, you're supposed to stay in with the budget, and then there's a seizure when we, you know, there's a fire alarm, we got to pull, when it's not in the budget, and this did not happen at this point.
Yes, I got, I got the price increase, it says 23, but it was 24, January 22nd.
Well, I'm, right, so you first learned about it probably in December or January, is that correct?
Yes.
And then it came to us, I know it came to us in March, but it came to the Selectmen in February?
February, yeah, February, yeah.
So, well, with me personally, and I think I just addressed this to you, there's the rub right there, you know what I mean? I understand why it needs to be done, because if a part's not available, we have to go to another part, you know, but this man, you know, he bid the truck.
Right.
You, you know what I mean, so he should be staying by the, by the bid, you know what I mean, or if he can't, and I understand the guy doesn't do great paperwork, I guess, right, isn't that where some of the rub is here?
Yeah, kind of, because, yeah, I mean, he's a, he's a fabricator, he's a shop guy, that's, the paper in his business is not, you know.
It's 40?
Yeah.
When did the trucks come, we got the truck, are these, it seems like you get trucks every week, I don't really have a fund, but the trucks came when, because I, I know that before I was even here, you guys were ordering cabin chassis, and then we were trying to fit the back of them, right, so is this one of those trucks?
Okay, both of them.
Okay, great, so, so it's been a long time process, right, so, so when there's a state bid and somebody bids on this truck, because it seems like every capital piece of equipment that we buy takes a long time, right, so is this a common thing that we're going to find all the way through? Or at what point did we say, hey, here's a bid, and John, will you fund this, or I'm sorry, finance board, will you fund this, and this is what it's going to be?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's a good question, I mean, prior, you know, I mean, I hate to keep saying all the COVID thing, oh, whatever, prior to that.
That was four years ago, and it just seems like you're getting old on it, everybody.
Exactly, you know, so we ordered, we ordered those trucks, I believe it was in November of 22, 21, and I got them in December of 22.
From Ford.
From Ford, it was like a 14-month wait on those two chassis, right, and then Everest, who generally had stock's bodies, they were taken over by the Alamo Group, and Everest now just builds bodies by order. So it was a long backlog with Everest trying to get bodies also, that was another problem that we had, there's different stuff from that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, again, I said something, you know, I mentioned that, you know, there's investment groups that are buying these, and it's a lot of family-sized businesses. You know, the Alamo Group owns probably 75 to 80% of the snow, would be the purchase now, that they own all the different manufacturers of Everest, that's one of them. And one of the things to do with Everest was really shorten up the amount of what does it add that were fabricator dwellers, and just go to buy water type of, type of structure.
Right.
And it's been, and that's been a big holdup too, I hope, I think that, I hope that answers.
Cynthia?
Yeah, um, so, so Bob, when did you find out about this price change, did it come to you with a phone call, and when was that approximately?
Well, he, he, we, we found out from, we found out from Dewey's, like, end of November, like, beginning of December, right in there, that they weren't going to be able to supply us with the valving and the tank system that we, that we needed out of the truck, right, so that, that's when we went to, maybe like a week or two later, we went to Force America and talked to them, okay, and got the components in, and then it was right around the middle of January, we got, we actually got the pricing together for me, for the, for the increase in the cost on the trucks.
It's like, I guess what I'm asking, and, um, so, did you, because this is just coming to us now, so did you, um, put in a purchase order or something, or did you get, did the Board of Selectmen approve it?
I went, I went, yeah, well, it's in capital, CNR, so I didn't, there was no purchase order, but, um, I went to the Board of Selectmen.
Two, two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago, maybe.
Yep, whenever it was, in, in February, I don't remember the exact date, Cynthia, that was, that was there.
Um, just so, it's Bobby references, sorry about it, uh, the trucks were approved in October of 21. The build-out was approved in September of 22.
Right, I remember that.
These trucks.
Yeah, yeah, it, it is, it's, you know, the Peterbilt's have been the same way, we were forever on those, on those chassis.
But the two, the two red 550 trucks are in the garage and they're working.
Right.
And when did they show up here?
January. At least in January, something like that.
And then the guy didn't. They sent the invoice first, or they delivered the truck so you could lick them?
No, they delivered, they delivered the truck, you know, I mean, he's, he probably, he's, he's pricing the parts at what, what his cost was, but, I mean, the guy's just embarrassed, is embarrassed about this, as I am, to be quite honest with you, you know, because he, he lives on his reputation. And these things shouldn't allow, right, well, you know, I, I don't know if this is help or not, but you know, 20-something years, I've never had a price increase that I had to come back to the tower or anywhere vehicles equipment, you know.
Well, what did, what does the original contract say, or the agreement, does it not stick to a price, or is there any language in there that? Is there any contract?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a quote, it's a quoted price for a build on, on a, a truck body and the hydraulics.
And is there any language that makes any provision for a price increase? Because it just seems like, I don't know, it just seems like a lock-in would be appropriate, and, uh, you know, that they should eat it, honestly, I mean, I understand why you need it, but if, if they're not keeping to a price quote, that's kind of a problem, no?
I think some of the problem here, though, it's not, he can't physically get the pieces that Bobby, right, ordered initially.
All right, so we have to get the alternative.
There was a supply issue, yeah, they weren't making that.
I understand, so when they offer, when they offered you the alternative, did they give you like a, like a wholesale price or some ridiculous reduction? Because of the time lag and the unavailability of the original?
Yeah, he, he quoted us on the exact cost of, of the system that he would, that he purchased it for.
Okay, perfect, that's what I want to know.
See, that is, we removed the cost of the other hydraulic system from.
Oh, sure, I understand, okay, thanks.
All right, so, so, I mean, I completely understand the truck part, I just don't really like the, the delay part.
Right.
So how, how do we, how do we fix that part, you know, I, I understand your track history, and I talked to Brad about it today and all that, but, I mean, you understand her steps, right? Fleet last year went over.
They did.
You know what I mean, so, but, you know, I understand you guys are doing department meetings.
Yeah.
So are we going to catch these kind of things?
So this, so this is some of the stuff that will be discussed, um, and the department heads, like, what else is going on? And I think, I think Bobby's hearing you when you say, you're a little frustrated that you didn't find out when he found out, right, like?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Same day, but, just a same.
Right, so probably before we gave the guy the go-ahead to go with the new one, even if we had to give the go-ahead before the Board of Finance could met officially, I think if in the future, I'd call either me, and I'll reach out the neck, or.
The first selectman.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't talk to you about it.
Um, but I think that's, I think that's where the frustration is coming from, it sucks, the 30 grand is frustrating in its own right, but it.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was.
Yeah.
Over the wall, and the fact that you can't get the system that you originally wanted, but I think the frustration is just that.
It, it's somewhat of a surprise element that I know I don't like, I mean, I don't, I'd feel more comfortable if I know well in advance.
Right, agree, you know.
But I, I think either way, it, it's something that we need, because we need the equipment, but, but in the spirit of trying to keep the funds in the CNR account, it's important for us to have projections on how far it's going to go out, right, so if years ago, we made a motion to fund something for $100,000, you know, these $30,000 wax, you know, there's going to be a master plan for capital purchases, and it, it just, you know, so, you know, that being said, I made the motion to fund it. I had talked to the chairman before, and I'm thinking that I almost want to amend my motion and take $20,000 out of CNR and hope that you're, the Public Works could find savings in either overtime, salt, or sand, to fund the rest of it, and us give the authority to Brad to transfer from one to the other, now, that's just a shell game, we have to buy it, and, and we all agree that we need it, and we need it, but at least it keeps our CNR account balanced a little better, you know, you know, so.
That's novel, I like that.
Okay, so John amended his motion, and Will, did you second that originally, are you okay with that?
So I'll second the motion. I amended.
So, so my motion is to fund the, the adjustment of 20,000, not 31, right, Mary? Yeah, and then we'll, and Brad, then we'll worry internally how we fund the rest of the.
Yeah, and if we don't have the 11, 182, I, I don't think 11 is going to be our problem at the end of the year if we have a problem.
Right.
Um, but I just want you to kind of note it that.
And, and I do realize, you know, in, in the middle of, of May, when we're all excited about possibly, you know, transferring some savings from some other account that we just tilted by 20, or shortened, sorry, 11, no, we took, we took.
20's coming out a year ago.
11 is the mystery part, yeah, right, Bob, did you have anything you'd like to add there? No, I mean, did you have any thoughts or?
I have thoughts, I'm not sure it's going to add to the discussion, so.
You what, I'm sorry?
I have thought, but I'm not sure it's going to add to the discussions.
No.
Now, now I really want to know.
Right. You think we're going the wrong direction and just pay for the darn thing?
That's what I would do, and then, at the end of the year, when we have the the extra that we hoped for, we then put in.
I, I, I think the.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in the camp of simplicity and straightforwardness, and, uh, not, not as opposed to hiding, that means just, but we know that this is, we need 31,182, take it out of the capital, not recurring.
And let the extras fall where as they fall. Yeah, because traditionally, when there is money left in, on the expense side of the budget, not 2023, the, the prior years, we take in extra money and put it into CNR. Or add it, well.
I thought it always went back in the general and then.
So, the last, there's in 22 and 21, the Board of Finance transferred, I think one year was 200,000, and the other year was like 400,000 into CNR.
Into CNR, we have, we had to put it into CNR. So anywhere, we could put it anywhere, but we thought it was important to fund the CNR with more money.
Yes, well, so there's two things, so when you do your year-end transfers, um, anything budgeted that the town isn't spending, you can fund additional things that are budgeted for, like additional to CNR, without having it go to fund balance first, so in 2022, the Board of Finance moved an additional 200,000 to CNR, 21, 400,000, 2020, that's 2020, uh, 2020 was 400,000, uh, the year before that was 500,000. Um, so I think to Bob's point, I understand your point, John, of what you're trying to do, I think we're better off just going, let's hope you have additional savings, otherwise, to make up for this, so that we can backfill CNR, I think it's cleaner that way than splitting it.
And I'd be in favor of that, I, I was calling there, you know, I understand, Bobby, I just want you to understand, I mean, we just can't, you know, any department here, you know, it, it, we just can't do this. You know, there's an extra, just one step.
Right, I mean, right.
This, by the Board of Finance has supported you, I mean, I mean, we bought a million dollars of the trucks in the last three, four years, you know what I mean, so it, it's not at that point, it's just a seizure.
Right, exactly, and this, you know, this, I, you know, like I said, all the women I've ever seen, there were, in, this has been.
Totally get how it happened.
Yep, I got you. John, would you consider going back to your original motion?
With your explanation, I, and I can appreciate that, and, and it's, it's doing the same thing, like you said, I'm just afraid of all the departments coming in and wanting to spend CNR, which is four, you're, you're the author of, of creating the CNR account, and, um, I would pull back my amended motion with Will's acceptance and go in my original motion to fund the 31,182 out of CNR account.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Cynthia?
I just want to understand, um, so if there are savings from salt and sand, or what, however that's going, are you good, are you thinking of backfilling CNR with the entire amount, or with the savings?
No, I, I just, I think what Bob was saying, you know, we know this is a, we have to, we have to buy this, right?
Yeah.
So it'd be cleaner just to buy it, and then whatever we decide with anything extra, it, it's separate, and it's, you know what I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be just back into the, the general, or we can transfer it into the CNR, I mean, it.
Whatever we find appropriate.
It's two separate things, basically.
Okay, I understand, I just wanted to clarify that, okay, thanks.
Right, did you have something? You're, you're okay, did, did I explain it right?
Yeah.
You are going to clean up that messy motion, right, I mean, you're making me look.
Yeah, Mary will take, Mary will take care of it.
You would, you would do your amendment, I'm from a sector.
Yeah, all we're voting on right now is the original. Okay, so let's try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, please say a, say a aye?
Aye.
On the motion?
Aye.
Okay, Bob, thanks, but again, it's just, it's. So here's my question, do you have to put it in neutral to use a transfer? For the pump? No, do you or not? No, okay, like the old, right?
Yeah, no.
Okay, good.
No, so.
External gear. You just have to put the truck in neutral.
Side plate on it.
Fight it.
Every once, knock round the gear.
All right, all right, enough about that.
All right, guys, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, so again, the last thing on the agenda, um, and I know there was a change, and Cynthia and Dee probably don't have this. Um, the Board of Selectmen voted on a, a piece of equipment for the Stony Hill Fire Department for 11,528, and that bid, believe it or not, is no good anymore, it's more money, it didn't go down, so Brad, how do you think we should be handling this, before we go into any other?
So, you have updated information, so one or two things could happen. You could take the updated quote for the 12,965, 20, you could send it back to the Board of Selectmen for the 1,400 change. In essence, they approved that, I think they would just turn around and send it back to the Board of Finance, and all we've done is delay it, but I understand procedurally, that's the route you want to take, but it's all, all the items of the quote are saying, everything went up, because the original quote was from November of 23.
So you're saying the paper would just catch up, you're saying, instead of not acting on it?
In essence, you're just going to force the Board of Selectmen to act on it again, to send it back to you for a 1,400 dollar change.
Okay, so we know where we're going there, um, do we want to? Okay, so we know where we're going there. Um, do we want to, you guys want to present on that and explain to everybody? Fred?
Yeah, well, I can tell you that the board of fire commissioners discussed this, I believe it was either a December or a January meeting, forwarded to the board of selectmen, you know, a request. There's there's a capital now recurring request in this current year for twelve thousand for for this item.
For the eleven thousand number. Yeah.
Yeah, for the item across. Twelve thousand dollar request in the ten year plan.
Hmm.
As the current budget.
Mm hmm.
We we had a quote for eleven five that Chief Baker presented to the fire commission and in November eight on it, we acted on it, I believe it's December or January forwarded to the board of selectmen. Prices since going up now with almost a full quarter later, I don't, I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, prices.
One of the things that the way the process was, we had to start with the process of fire commission and, you know, no fault from anybody in this room, but meetings got canceled due to weather, due to um participation, whatever. So that delayed the uh fire commission making a motion, then the uh had to go to the board of selectmen. In that timeframe, that last the uh cost had gone up. Um, I didn't realize that it was only a thirty day quote, so it went up right after the the board of selectmen acted on it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're four, four or five months past the original call, but I know I hate to try to make excuses for the price increase, but that's where we are. Like I said, there's, there was an original, you know, request in the capital, ten year plan for twelve thousand dollars for this item. They had a quote for eleven five. It's up to twelve nine sixty five now.
Twelve to twelve fifty percent. Yeah, from November to now.
Okay, I know there's no motion on it, so I I know how it happened. Okay, so so I think everybody's go with that. So can we just talk about the piece of equipment? And I believe it was on last year's capital plan. Can we just kind of do a little history of what this is?
And, you know, it was part of the total uh C N R and it was towards the end year now is when we were looking at, okay, now we need to request the funding that we put into the total pounds cap, you know, C N R. So what the items are, is there um stabilization, um, what they call struts, it's made by Paratek, that you use on um primarily motor vehicle accidents when the car is on its side, on its roof, down an embankment, up against a tree, wherever it is, what is not uh on its on its four wheels. It needs to be stabilized to get the uh occupants out, keep the uh uh firemen safe from anything happen to the uh vehicle that if it happens to move. So that's what this whole kit is. We currently have a system called Rescue Jax. It's much um more cumbersome, much uh heavier. Um, and it's not what the um department down here in Bethel has. So now with extrication calls and and uh calls of this nature, where both departments go, now you've got two different uh systems trying to work at the same team. You constantly have to train on two different systems, which ones are gonna be used first. If it's in Stony Hill, would it be the Rescue Jax, come down here and it's Paratek? And if you haven't used it um on a regular basis, you may be doing something correct incorrect and it would be safe. So we're trying to uh standardize equipment between the two departments. Um, we feel that it's necessary to duplicate the uh equipment because of the fact that the distance that it would be from a uh an incident, we do have the uh Interstate eighty four in our district and we have had some pretty significant accidents up there that would uh require stabilization.
Just speaking a little bit to I, he's looking to replace some equipment. It's probably twenty five years old, the Rescue Jax, and and match it with what they have downtown in Bethel. The use of these is 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 very intensive. It requires a lot of training. And for, I mean, members from both departments, they interact with each department a lot. So to have them train on two different sets i- is it's very difficult for them to be proficient in the use of two different types. And that's the main driving factor why they want to standardize the these type of struts within both departments as opposed to having two different types. And and we feel that it's very important that they have them in Stony Hill, meaning that they, you know, they have eighty four runs through their districts. I mean, that that's where it's gonna stay a lot of use. And yes, they, you know, it's duplicating what they have downtown. But that's also important because stabilization stabilization of a vehicle is one of the first things you have to do in a motor vehicle actually. So we can't have a motor vehicle actually out in Stony Hill District and wait for the Bethel Rescue Truck. It's ten minutes away. You get there, perform the first act of safety that has to be done.
Guys, one question, and it's probably more of a request than a question for the fire commission and the fire departments themselves. I think when there are, I agree with, it makes sense to have same systems, right? Especially when both departments, everybody shows up to a major incident. I think what I would request of the fire commission is when you're looking at replacing a piece of equipment at one of the firehouses, I think at the same time, it makes sense to see what other fire department has. And if theirs is aging out, I think it'd be helpful to know that going. I know this has been on the capital plan, but when Bethel's was replaced, I think it would have been helpful to go just so you know, in two years, Stony Hills needs to be replaced and we're gonna want to match this. I just think, because we're trying to look at.
I understand.
The capital from a.
Just to speak, Bethel didn't necessarily, Bethel didn't replace theirs when it aged out. They they added to their their system. They expanded their their current system. So what it wasn't.
I think it's still.
Well, you're right. Should have been all done at the same time.
Yeah.
And and I'm looking at that with with turnout gear. It's kind of an argument like that with both chiefs. We, I got one chief buying turnout gear from one vendor and I got another chief buying a turnout gear of a different type from another vendor. It just doesn't make sense. You know, we could buy twenty sets of turnout gear from one vendor as opposed to ten from one and ten from another.
Well, especially turnout gear is a good example too, because I know if somebody leaves, they don't get to keep their turnout gear. And then if you find somebody the same size, but that same size thing should be across both departments in theory, I would think.
Be a bigger pool.
Yeah.
Cynthia?
Yeah, I I apologize, but I've just been talking about this forever and I philosophically, I think that anything that you're gonna replace that substantial or even not substantial, that both fire departments should be um standardized in buying from the same vendor. I don't quite understand the separateness of the departments, but it just makes more sense. And I, you know, the more consistency you can get on that, I think the better for everybody. It's my opinion.
I would agree also.
But I think I think that's one of the goals of the fire commission. Uh, I actually.
Yay.
I actually had a conversation with the first selectman tonight and and think about that and possibly doing something with um purchase requisitions where, you know, they currently go into the uh like the comptroller's office. Maybe if they came to the fire commission first and we saw what was being bought and noted, you know.
Aren't you approving the purchase before they buy it?
We, no, we we approve a budget and no, we're not because we we approve the budget and then once we approve a budget, it's out of our hands.
Then it's a while, while west. They just do what they want.
While west, yeah, they're sending their purchase requisitions.
As chair, change that?
That's gotta stop.
I think that's one of the things that the first selectman's looking at is the charter revision to really kind of establish what the fire commit, because it was not outside of the charter.
There there's not a lot of meat to the organization of the fire commission. It 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 needs some sweeping.
Do you have something?
I I guess when I think about this, you know, we always have emphasized prioritize safety first. It sounds like this is a safety issue, so our, I think our natural inclination is to go with it. And I am though, I I'm a process side. I am actually optimistic and not good. I think we're seeing improvements in in the the process. It's not happening immediately, but that's because I think we're trying to change a process that had been in place for a long, long time. I I get the procedural part of it. It wasn't exactly perhaps how we think it's gonna be or should be in the future. But as to the substance of the request, again, it seems like it falls into the safety category. Gotta keep these guys safe. I mean, right, if if we're not safe, we're nothing. So I think for the substance of it, and Fred, you tell us the fire commission is is in favor of it, uh, it uh is moving toward Cynthia's point of a common product and vendor. So it seems like process is taking an incremental step forward. So that's all good.
I think the only other thing that we might want to talk about, and by we, I mean the board, because I'm not part of the board, is there's also a quote for the whole kit of thirty seven thousand that is an additional request, not currently, but this is just the twelve nine sixty five.
Out of the thirty seven?
It wa- it's part of it. So it was additionally, it's another twenty five. It's part of, it's a starter kit versus the full kit.
That was gonna be my question, because I thought there was a second part here, but that's in next year's capital request?
Requested in next year's C N R. That was um requested in the ten year plan. So what I did was because this had not been approved yet, I went with the full kit. So the whole thing was the thirty seven. Now with that going with an increase as well, which would be the quotes we were getting in November. That current quote, which I just got about a week ago, was saying thirty seven thousand for everything. If this gets approved and we make this purchase, this twelve thousand would be coming out of that thirty seven. So what what is its additional um struts? Because it's very modular, this uh system. So it would be a larger kit than what uh Chief Ingram was talking about when Bethel added to their kit, we would be adding to our kit. But the first aspect is stabilization, but then depending on the accident, there may be some lifting involved of the the vehicles. And that's another aspect that would have to be added on to the system. So that's why it's uh additional increase and we split that up between the two uh capital years.
Does Bethel have a full kit? The other fire department have a full kit?
No, they they have two of the mod- two of the three modules.
Will they be wanting a full kit?
Of course. They're coming.
They they've already asked for it and the fire commission did not act on their request. Um, they they did not have it in their original ten year capital plan and it miraculously showed up in next year's capital request. So the fire commission felt that it was not necessary this time and failed to act on it.
The uh, so the capital plan that you got as part of the budget had twelve thousand for physically your twenty four, twenty thousand eight twenty six, which is the is the thirty two thousand eight twenty six. Obviously, we know that's already gone up to thirty seven. Based on the handout, I mean.
Thirty seven, right?
Yeah.
Can I? Yeah, jumping. So Fred, I I love what you just said, that the fire commission decided that downtown, it was either important or not important, so then they have a piece of equipment. But a second, a minute ago, I heard that it was the wild west and the fire, individual fire departments were setting their capital plans and their requests to the comptroller's office.
No.
He said it wasn't on the menu.
Once, once.
Operator. Oh, just the operator.
Operator.
Once their operating budget, you know, passes muster with the fire commission or selectmen or finance and it's unreal, then.
As long as they have that money, they're spending it.
They got carte blanche to operate, you know, was whatever Brad, you know.
As long as they're within budget.
Okay, so a turnout gear is an operating budget. It's not your capital. You're you're arguing, geez, you ought to buy it from the same guy because he's got the same color.
Yeah, I I I've gone so far as to put forth an idea that we shouldn't have two separate fire department budgets. We should be one fire department budget.
Okay, so how how was the mechanics of the first selectman wanting to do a charter in the char- when we do a charter revision, giving them more of the ability to do this? Do they have the teeth now?
No.
So this is just, just a good.
Yeah.
Guys working together. The commission.
Just ideas, some ideas for the future.
So what's given the fire commission some teeth over stuff is the way the board of selectmen and board of finance react. So if fire department tried to come direct outside of the fire commission, if the board said you have a fire commission talk to them first.
Good.
That would give them some teeth. But the operating budget, their operating budget is their operating budget.
It's approved.
Um, one thing that uh Fred has requested and Sebby does now is the fire commission never asked for the financial reports. We assume they were getting them through the chiefs because the chiefs got them. Apparently, that was not the case. So now Fred gets copied on the each department's uh financial.
And their refund. Okay, because where I'm going with all this is, right? So I'm sitting here and we have a decision how we spend the money that we have in Bethel. I'm not a firefighter. I'm expecting the fire commission to give us guidance on how we should spend the taxpayers' money the best, right? So that's how I think it's working or I'm hope it's working because because I can't make a decision that we need these struts, you know? We need the recommendation from you saying, I can't believe they don't have it and we really need this, you know, through through your testimony.
Yeah, the fire commission wholeheartedly is behind this. Like I said, we feel like this is very important that they have a matching system where they have a Bethel because they work together.
And that totally makes sense.
Their training intensive to operate these units.
And if we go back to Bob saying it's very important to keep everybody safe and you penalized them because it wasn't on their list, you know what I mean? Wi- is this piece of equipment being safer for all the guys? Or is it, you know, you know what I'm saying? Where where's where's that stand?
Bethel already has the first two stages. They're they're asking for the third stage, which is, John could probably explain it better easily.
Oh, I understand. So you're saying they have.
We didn't, we didn't.
Plus they have Route six and I eighty four.
We didn't feel that with the downtown district.
To add to the.
We didn't feel that this third stage was necessary downtown.
The speed of traffic group.
We we think that it's probably, it's gonna be necessary out in Stony Hill District with the, you know, the higher speed, you know, traffic areas.
More interstate.
But South Street is safe. They just want to be safer. Is that kind?
I I mean, it's a this is an end stage to the first two stages. If it was needed downtown, it could come from Stony Hill and be implemented, you know, after the first two stages are implemented.
All this stuff works. They got all the parts, pieces all worked together.
Thank you.
Saying there's gold, there's gold structure.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you. So now we're back to, is this starter kit, you know? Is it, is it a good starter kit, you know, or do we go right to the thirty seven? I think ARPA would be really nice on this.
The the fire commissioner, I mean, I can't speak for the whole commission at this point, but I I I have a good feeling that the fire commission would vote unanimously to come back to it next year, which is in the capital, to to fund the second half of it.
Does this, does this starter kit, you could call it a starter kit.
Sounds like Mr. T or thirteen thousand.
Does that apply to the old system? So could could this do everything, the old strut system or the old, you gave it the name, I'm sorry, how you stabilize?
So it could do the aspect of stabilizing. It can't do the um part of lifting.
But does the old system lift? Does the old system lift?
Yes.
Oh, minimum. I'm sorry?
Min- minimally. I I mean, it lifts, you know.
Yeah, it's a manual crank and it it goes up in very small increments. This is a pneumatic system. It's a little bit.
So if you put that in the in the in the shed and and it's not on the truck anymore, in Stony Hill during this time period, you're no longer lifting this much.
Correct. Not that they were just stabilized.
And the fire commission's okay with that?
But they have, they have other means of it. You you have airbags with with up to forty tons of weight.
Oh, true, okay.
With airbags and.
Cynthia, please.
Yeah, so um would there be any sort of price increase or benefit to doing the whole thing now? I know you said, um, Fred, that you'd come back next year, but is the pricing volatile or?
Yeah, well, we've already seen a hundred dollar increase in just one quarter.
And these quotes, you know, we're learning are only thirty days uh guaranteed. So I would expect.
Right.
By July, the quote for the thirty seven and the full set for the two gears is gonna go up.
Or it could go down a little year.
But to Nick, to your point, this seems like a a good candidate for ARPA. Surely, e- even if we went, you know, for the whole thing, because if there is gonna be a price increase, we're just gonna be.
But th- these manufacturers are gonna find there's a limit, you know what I mean? And when, there there's gonna be a limit, you know what I mean? So I think that we should go with the fire commission and um.
Yeah, I mean, the fire commission was just trying to stay within the budget request. You know, there was twelve in twelve in this year's capital. And so I mean, that's why we recommended the original eleven five.
You can't ignore.
I'm just trying to stay within the initial request.
I agree. Yeah, that's important. You just heard Bobby, right?
Yeah.
You know, knowing that, you know, all the whole thing is, you know, when all said and done, it's gonna be, you know, forty thousand or thirty eight, thirty nine thousand.
Okay, so just to go back, the the selectman approved eleven five, but now the new ask is is twelve nine, Bobby? Is that what it is?
Twelve nine six five.
Right, and so we can make not to exceed that motion and as long as.
And they'll have to prove it or prove it, then. Well, but it doesn't have to go back to the selectman. They, the selectman approved the eleven six or eleven five. I don't think it needs to go back to the selectman for the fourteen hundred dollars. They approved the purchase of it. The final price of it.
It's up to us. Is that, is that true? I mean, is that?
I think typically that's.
And it's identical. The invoice is identical, but.
It's just a different balance. Yeah.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
So someone, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of twelve thousand nine sixty five twenty to purchase the Paratek struts for the Stony Hill Fire Department out of the C N R account. Sorry.
Excellent.
Second.
We have a second from Cynthia. So I think we're pretty good. I think we're, everybody on where we're going. So all in favor, say say an aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That second set, we are going to probably anticipate the, uh. Costs to go up between now and when the first.
Or the cost can go down.
It could, okay. So just continue to update you and, and get.
Yes.
As we get closer and just, uh.
As, as you update your capital list.
Yeah.
Through, through Brad, we'll, we'll see it. But of course, communication is, is always a good thing, you know what I mean? So, but, yes.
John and I view this identically, which is Fred, I, for, at least for me, I think.
You'll say it in a better way, so this is good.
I take a tremendous amount of comfort out of the fire commission kind of looking at this critically. So to the kind of future, you know, chief, to the extent that you guys have this as a suggestion. I think it would be helpful to go through the fire commission, have the fire commission look at it critically before it comes to anybody else.
Oh.
Because maybe, maybe the costs go up, maybe they go down. Look, inflation is not gonna stop until people stop buying stuff. So maybe the last is, we, we postpone it and we take it off the list because the fire commission says.
This year, we're good with, with the starter kit. So, so maybe. This request is not coming in three months because this year you had on your capital plan that we need twelve thousand dollars for the starter kit. And that works for this year. So. My expectation is the fire department or the, the commission doesn't come in three months that. We need, you know, section two now.
No, because it's like, I think you guys are saying the same thing. Yes, and I think some of it, just so publicly, I know we had a meeting last, uh, last week talking about it. The first left man and I are gonna do a deep dive into the full capital list and try to start working with the departments to prioritize. Because the capital list is like ten million dollars. And C N R before tonight had one point two million unallocated. So now it has like a million unallocated. The budget costs for six fifty. We're hoping to move it up to at least seven seventy five with some savings we've had. There's not enough money. To do the whole list, so we need to start prioritizing.
Absolutely.
And I think we're gonna rely on the fire commission to help us prioritize. We're gonna rely on B P W, Board of Ed, everybody. Uh, because again, the, the list of needs outweighs the amount of money that we have.
Definitely. And we have to buy the most important for the town, obviously, as, as a whole. We know there's a bunch of big equipment that's needed, but everybody has to realize that we just can't, you know, this bucket is getting small. You know what I mean? We were kind of fat during COVID. There was COVID money. There was a whole bunch of money. But we're getting pretty lean now, so we have to buy exactly what we need. I understand it's a need for the struts and, and, and I've supported it, but we just, we have to realize we have to work as a team. You know, and we have to, there has to be trust.
Saw it out with our request for a ladder truck. I mean, we had this fire analysis done and they recommended two ladder trucks for the town and. You know, the fire commission looked at it and said, all right, well, we see the need for two ladder trucks, but we know that that can't happen at one time. We prioritize, you know, the need for Stony Hill. We know. You gotta get us two ladder trucks, but you know, with priority being first.
Since you mentioned ladder truck, you know, and this report, this report hasn't really come out. We know there was a presentation here and I was a little offended about some of the input that was put into this. And I don't think we.
You and I spoke.
Well, I, again, I'll say it publicly, I don't think we got what we paid for in that report. When, when, when we have to get down to, and again, I, I, I'm gonna mess up the numbers. But when we, the response has to be within seven minutes for a ladder truck. And I was told that we drive our fire trucks at thirty miles an hour and we stop at all stop signs. That's how we got to eight minutes and that's why we need two ladder trucks. That was a little offensive. Um, but again, we'll talk about the report when it comes out. So we understand there's equipment to be done, but I'm not real big fan of that report. I, I'm, usually when you put junk in, you get junk out and, and I'll just say that, okay?
I wasn't a big fan of having a report talking.
Right.
You and I have already discussed.
We appreciate your service. We appreciate everything everybody does for the town. The volunteer is a huge thing. We're here. We just, we, we, there's not a huge bucket of money. You know, there's real people that make real decisions in their households. And that's what I, I always think of. So, um, I, but I do appreciate everybody's service, okay?
Hello.
Bad luck. Well, it looked pretty bad there. Cynthia, is there something you'd like to say?
Uh, yes, I would. I want to hearken back to what Bobby and Fred has said that. You know, this is progress and we are, we are making progress on all fronts as far as I can see and. Uh, it's gonna take a little while, but we're making progress.
Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're at the end of, uh, agenda, so I would accept. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. To you, Bob.
Don't we vote, we vote on the motion? Guess we did.
Please, Brad, please enlighten us.
All right, uh, I'm gonna start with the.
Right, that wasn't a funny part.
The, um. The only thing that I'm, the big, oh, let me rephrase. I'm watching all of it. The biggest thing that I'm watching right now is utilities. Utilities. Sixty seven percent of the way through the year is at seventy one percent. You know bills don't come in immediately. We're getting, it was like sixty degrees today. Hopefully we're out of the main part of the heating season. Um, because that's a huge driver and it's the biggest, one of the biggest variables. We have utilities. So in the coming months, we're gonna have a much better handle of what utilities will look like as a whole. Electric's usually pretty stable. Heating can swing wildly. So. Um, once we come out of, fully come out of the main part of the heating season, we'll much better handle of it. Um, even though I'm not waving a big flag right now and I'm not saying we're in trouble with it, it's the biggest thing that's a variable right now. Um, obviously legal's always potentially an issue because it doesn't take a lot to drive that up. Um, but that's, but like professional services right now is at sixty percent. Um, we're not in bad shape with that at this time, but again, these are the. The, the accounts that have the biggest swings to it are obviously the ones we're looking this far out. And we are doing our meetings, um. Dan, Sevy and I will meet with all of the apartment heads again in April and early April so we can go through where we're at. Um, so expense wise. Again, I'm not freaking out about utilities. We've had a pretty good year, I think. Um, we were able to lock in for the future year budget wise slightly lower. Um.
Did you lock in the cash? I'm sorry.
Locked in the gas. Uh, I think it was like ninety, but it goes to like ninety five with the tax on it.
And we budgeted a one dollar?
Yeah, so that's probably like ten fifteen. Um, it's probably honestly based on utility volatility. I have a hundred and twenty five between health savings and some workers comp stuff at least. We can move the ten to C N R, but I think the ten probably needs to stay in utilities because it is the most volatile of the. Uh, again, I'm not, I'm not losing sleep yet about utilities.
It seemed like you're prepping to lose.
No, it's, when I'm driving here tonight, I'm going, all right, what am I most concerned about? Oh, utilities. All right, I gotta do a deep dive. All right, we gotta make sure we get all the utility, all the.
You mean Sevy, right? I mean.
No, tomorrow when I come in and go, Sevy, we gotta really look at this. But now she's hearing it, so now she can make an.
Find her budget in her, in her schedule, right?
You know, she'll do all the work. I'll take all the credit.
Of course. Just wanna make sure. You mentioned professional services. We're only at sixty percent. That's legal fees.
Yes, yes.
So what was that total budget that we approved last year? So I could do the math backwards.
Uh, so professional services was approved for two seventy six. We spent one sixty five right now.
Okay, so, so is typically you get a bunch of, uh, invoices, you know, in the next month or two? Or do you think that sixty's projecting that there's gonna be some savings in the professional?
I don't anticipate any savings in legal.
Okay.
Because I wanted initially, if you remember the twenty five budget, my first draft of it had us going up sixty thousand.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Thirty, going, hopefully we'll. Have a good year and try to like ease to where we need to be a little bit.
So there's some legal fees out there that you think is gonna.
Yeah.
Kill.
No, it's the timing of it, you know?
Time to burn out more money.
You know, we have appeals out there. I think the, one of the big appeals out there, the earliest they might deal with it is June. If they start earlier, we're gonna have more expenses this year. If they start later, the more expenses go into the future year. So it's. Some of the legal, it all depends on when you really incur some of it. You know, uh, it's not as predictable. So that, the things that aren't as predictable are the things that I worry about the most. Um, and I think I would not be doing my job if I wasn't kind of talking about some of those unpredictable items. Um, so, but we're watching it. Uh, I started with expenses on purpose. On the revenue side. Um, it's quite the opposite. Um, we, the increased budget after the park and rec adjustment. Has interest budgeted at five hundred and seventy nine thousand. Um, through February, we already collected just under one point one million.
Jesus.
Um, so, and that doesn't include the one point one million dollars from the sale of properties that we've had. Which I know some of that's gonna move to F J Clark, but not all of it's gonna move. Um, the miscellaneous state revenues are a over by seven hundred thousand. And we haven't even gotten the two eighty two six that we budgeted for. That comes in and back. Um, so early projections have us. My early projections had us at two million dollars. Excess revenue over what was budgeted, the line chair being a million dollars from the state. And the interest is probably gonna be eight hundred thousand or so to the good. Um, and that doesn't include the change in future value because that money's going up too. Um, so, or the sale of properties. So the revenue, I have no concerns of at this time. Um, which is good because there's a lot of capital needs of this falls out the fund balance or. You know, the board approved at the last meeting, funding the tax stabilization fund from the twenty three. Excess revenue to five hundred thousand. Um, ideally at the end of fiscal year twenty four, we'll put another five hundred in. And we'll decide next year how much of that we'll use in that. But ideally, we're gonna fund five hundred thousand every year that we can. It just gives us more leeway.
Or C N R.
Yeah, C N R is another good use of it, but I think it'd be great. I know this first year, the plan is to fund it five hundred and use five hundred coming off the rebound. Ideally, next year we fund it five hundred and use four. Funded five hundred, the following year, you maybe use three unless we need.
We don't have to spend it all, right?
It'd be nice to have a little bit of money there so you can have a little run out in case things get bad and you can't fund it. So.
Do we think, look, I, I, I said this at the last meeting and I've said it privately. The, this board funding, the stop, excuse me, this board funding, the tax stabilization fund. Is a fantastic, uh, step forward. Like that, that's been many years in this plan. Uh, we had to deal with some other obligations right first. We had to get them out, all that short trip debt stuff. And now we're able to do this. Do you have a sense for whether? The, the townspeople understand what this tax stabilization fund is? Because I think it would be helpful to explain it clearly so that folks know that we are trying to return. Their money and that we take as little of it as we must.
And this is a tool to give it back to them. Totally. It's, it's a rebate in my mind. It's always a rebate, you know, since we talked about it.
That's a great way to label it. It's a rebate. I think maybe at the public meeting.
The public hearing, yes.
Public hearing, excuse me, correct. Uh, maybe there, you all know what.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just help folks understand.
For whose antennas and videos, sure.
Definitely.
You're talking about it. When I, when, when you're talking about it, Brad, I, you know, we've kind of lived and breathed this, so we understand it.
You created it.
I'd be worried if people, you know, just, their lives are too busy to be. Work with all this minutia. Kind of, it sounds almost, I think. Yeah, exactly what we're spending. It's, it's actually helping us to reduce.
Reduce your, your tax burden.
Yeah, and I think to that point, uh, Nick, you and I can meet before the public hearing. And we should run, here's what the proposed mill rate is with using the tax stabilization fund. Here's the proposed mill rate if we.
Tim Rel examples, yeah.
Because I think, like, right now a mill's roughly two point five million dollars. So this five hundred thousand in revenue is really point two mills that the taxpayer doesn't have to fund for fiscal year twenty five. Because this exists.
And maybe even explain where, you know, this excess revenue is coming in because the state gave us money there. Because of all, it's ARPA funds, right? That never gave us before. It's not that we're ignoring it. And, and by the way, we do risk management, price, we check revenues at ninety.
Ninety eight point seven.
Six, ninety eight point six, and we've been collecting at ninety nine change. But that's the right thing to do from a risk management standpoint. And now this is our tool to give it back.
Yeah, and some of it, I think, and we could talk more about it next to before the meeting. Um, and we could talk about it that night too, obviously, is. We've been really conservative with even what the state says they're gonna send us. Because typically, when the state hasn't had as much money. They go, oh, we're gonna give you this municipal grant aid. It's gonna be three hundred thousand. And then suddenly, when they finally set their budget, they go, well, there's always a caveat if we have money. And they never had money. So we never budgeted for it because we didn't want to create a hole. And then when it comes in. We're kind of taking that win that the money came in and then just following it back for the following year mill rate. Because now we have the ability to.
If I were a betting person, I would bet that once the state gets through with its federal funding. They're gonna go back to the state of, or the situation not having the cash and therefore not being able to deliver on the promises.
Yeah, well, because the state. For the rainy day fund is fault. So they haven't had to dip into it, but it doesn't take a lot to swing the state. As volatile as our budget can be, theirs is way more volatile. Um, I'm not defending the state because I do not defend the state by any means, but I understand that they have bigger swings in their revenue than us.
Don't make promises and not keep them.
Yeah.
Because we're budgeting a smaller town.
Yeah, and I don't think they budget as conservative.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Will says no.
Is there anything else for Brad on Brad's report?
Is that his report? Is that your report?
That's mine.
So I make a motion, we accept the report. Okay, so we, all in favor, I'm accepting Brad's report. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Excellent.
I'll second that motion, please.
Excellent.
All in favor, adjourned. All right, Cynthia, did you have something or is that, you're voting? You're voting, okay.
That was me voting. I mean, I'll, I'll, Delene and I will set up a, a. A hand signal legend for next time.